Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Jessica Bass, Southern County Engineer. Before we get into the meat of this resolution, I'd like to give you a little bit of background. This has been three-year in the making project, at least from my involvement. And I know others have worked on it prior to me being here at the county. Excuse me. And I know we have some new members, so I want to make sure that you have all the information you need as we go into this discussion. In early 2022, the Commissioners asked me to think about how we should look at using our ARPA funds. And one of the ways that came through those discussions was to look at master planning for infrastructure across our county. And so, as you probably know, we initiated five master plans countywide to look at different areas of infrastructure. And one of those was, two of those, I guess, was to look at water and wastewater. Water and wastewater service in Madison County is provided in our municipalities, but in the rural areas, they're provided typically by onsite systems, so private systems that are owned and managed by the homeowners. When many of these systems were installed, the regulations were different, the knowledge of the systems was different than what we know now. And so, the technology's changed over the years, the regulations have changed, and so, systems that are in place now, particularly in our rural communities, the subdivisions are not up to the same standards that we would require today, which makes it extremely difficult when these systems get to the end of their useful life. So, you would have a system where, or a neighborhood where you have properties that are quarter-acre lots, or smaller even, and they have septic systems on, or at least what passed as a septic system when the house was constructed. And when that gets to a point where it's no longer functioning properly, they are trying to determine what their options are, because the lots simply aren't big enough to build a current standard septic system in that place. So, they run into situations in a number of places, and this isn't unique to Madison County. It's very much a problem in Indiana and in the Midwest, just as our infrastructure ages, just as part of our aging infrastructure situation. So, we have been working on a master plan and a needs assessment to look at the county, to identify where these neighborhoods are, where these pocket areas are. And just to be clear, what we're not, we're not as concerned about homes that are on two, three, four, five acres and more, because they have room to rebuild their septic systems. These are the lots that are a quarter acre or a half acre, that just don't have the space to build a new septic system. While all of this was happening concurrently, we had a situation come up in Monroe Township near Alexandria. And this is a neighborhood where our Health Department had interacted with residents who were having troubles with their septic systems, and they just didn't have, many of them didn't have enough space to rebuild what they needed. The state got involved in this situation and identified Ross Seuvich in the unnamed tributary adjacent to this neighborhood. This is an area outside of the Alexandria city limits, so it's an unincorporated neighborhood. The receiving stream is not a regulated stream per se, but it is part of our MS4 network, so the overall stormwater system, stormwater conveyance system for the county. Because of that, that then falls under county jurisdiction by default, because there's not another entity who takes that over. So, IDEM reached out to the county, and basically is calling the county accountable to assist this neighborhood in resolving the situation. And that's part of the process then that has been happening in parallel to this needs assessment, as we go through the process, to identify how to help meet the objectives that IDEM has established in this agreed order with the county for this neighborhood. And an agreed order is a binding, it's essentially a court order. So, this is one of those things that the county has flexibility in how to address it, but not in whether or not to address it, at least not without getting into legal action. So, all of this has kind of come together now. And the point that we are at, through this evaluation of our options for how to, how to address these neighborhoods and these communities, we've looked at different options for the managerial structure. County is not a utility. The counties, we don't want to be in the utility business. That's just not how counties are structured. So, there's several different options that are out there. A county can partner with a municipal utility, a public utility. A county can partner with a private utility, such as Nine Star in Hancock County. Or a county can look at forming a conservancy district or a regional utility district. And evaluating those different options, the one that has risen to the top for recommendation from our consultants and from our discussions with the state is to form a regional utility district. And the reason that's the one that's recommended, and there's a couple of reasons. The primary reason is that with a regional utility district, it allows the formation of an independent utility with input from the pertinent overlapping jurisdictions, that by placing appointees on the utility board, that then gives the collaborative effort, but also the independence of the utility. That allows the utility to be able to pursue funding through different venues that the county itself cannot pursue, because we're just not eligible for them. It also allows the independence and separation of the finances for those situations. And also, with the regional utility district, you don't have to have continuous area. So, with the conservancy district, it's a similar situation, but you have to have continuous area. So, the utility district would allow, establishing the utility district gives them the flexibility in the future to address situations like the one up in Alexandria as they should arise. And honestly, we would expect they will, especially as IDEM turns their focus from regulating of the large industrial, large municipal permittees, the cities and towns, onto these more, more decentralized potential contaminants into our waterways. So, that being said, and I threw a lot of information at you, so feel free to ask me questions here. Well, what the Commissioners have moved forward with is drafting a petition for, to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management to form the Madison County Regional Utility District. We are very fortunate here in Madison County, because we have the Fall Creek Regional Waste District. Those of us who live in South Madison are customers of theirs, and they cover the four, the three, four South Madison townships. And so, we're able to learn from them and to see how they have structured. We did very early on talk to them and see if they would be interested in expanding, and they were not. They were very, very nice about it, but they very firmly said that, no, they liked sitting in their South Madison area. But that being said, this district, the initial area targeted, the initial service area targeted is Monroe Township, which is, it is the unincorporated portion of Monroe Township. It would not include the part that is already served, or already within the boundaries of the City of Alexandria's sewer utility. There's initial, that's the initial service area. That's not necessarily saying that everyone in Monroe Township would be getting sewer service. That is not at all the initial plan. It's just the region that is being targeted for this project because of where the agreed order currently is. The intent would be to form a regional utility district board with five members, an appointee from the county Commissioners, appointee from the Council, an appointee from the City of Alexandria, an appointee by the Madison County Health Department, and then an appointee by the Township Trustee. And then, that board would be established to basically run the utility and form the utility. They would be the ones determining the policies, procedures, and so forth, once the board is up and running. Now, concurrently with that happening, we do have to work towards addressing the situation that is in Monroe Township that we are under the agreed order for. What would then happen is, as the petition, we started the time clock, if we started the clock today, it would still be a year before the petition would form, could form the actual district. So, it's not a quick process, and that's intentional, to be able to ensure that there is a number of opportunities for public engagement, engagement for elected officials, and collaboration with the state and with other pertinent entities. So... But concurrently to that process happening, we would be moving forward on addressing the situation with the intent of then turning that over to the district, once it is in service. So, I know I threw a lot of information at you, and I'm more than happy to answer questions at this time.
How many households would be affected by the regional utility district?
At this time, we don't have that number.
You don't have a number for how many households are in the unincorporated Monroe Township?
I do not have that number, correct, as I said. We will have that number at some point, because that number needs to get, will have letters sent out, but I do not have that number with me.
Do you have a agreed order list that you're going to include with your petition to IDEM?
We absolutely will. I do not have that with me tonight.
Of course. So, you can't tell us exactly who this is going to affect, just...
Members of Monroe Township who live outside of the incorporated area are included in the district boundaries. That does not mean they will be directly affected. They are included within the district boundaries. Keep in mind, this is the very first step towards officially forming, forming the district. Maybe I should say, again, I think I said this already, but it's roughly a year from the date that the petition is submitted to IDEM. So, what would then happen is, there'll be a number of meetings, notices published in the newspaper, notices mailed to residents, public service announcements on radios. There'll be a public meeting where residents and anyone who's even not in the district boundaries are invited to give feedback on that. And then, the Commissioners would receive that feedback and, if needed, update the petition. And then, once the petition is submitted to IDEM, there's a 180-day comment period. During that time, anyone can make comments for, against, in support, neutral, whatever the position may be, to IDEM about this district and about the process and so forth. And then, at the end of that period, IDEM will make determinations to whether to issue an order forming the district or not. At this time, and at this time, in most utility district formations, details are not worked out, and that's because this is establishing the managerial structure.
So, when you create the regional utility district, and there are the five or four members appointed, what kind of powers do those five or four members have?
They essentially become the governing body for the utility, once the utility is up and running. They will go through the process with IDEM's guidance as to establishing rules, regulations, and the policies and procedures and so forth for the district.
Would they have domain powers?
I would assume they do, yes.
And if a sewer line was run in front of your house, would you have a choice of whether you wanted to hook up to that sewer or not?
The way state law is written is that if you're within 300 feet of a sewer line that is added, and I believe it's doorway to the sewer line, that's changed over the years, but I think that is what it is now, that the utility has the ability to establish policy as to whether or not they're forced to connect. I've worked with a number of utilities over the years. Some of them do force the connection, some do not. A lot of it depends on what type of system you're putting in. For example, if you have a pumping system and you don't have enough users on the pumping system initially, you will have odor issues, because the waste will not be pumped out of the lift station in a timely manner, and that is obviously not desirable. The other thing to keep in mind is that these areas, people may not be seeing issues, but if you start to get into situations where you're actually testing the groundwater, testing the water in the streams, you will find evidence of contamination.
So, you're asking us to sign a resolution saying we're going to support the creation of a new government entity that has internet domain powers and can force rural households onto sewer, a city sewer, if they so choose?
I am asking for a consideration for the draft of the resolution that's in front of you, and I'm happy to go through any part of it that you would like. The draft basically says that the, that the Council supports the formation of the regional utility district, with the understanding and knowledge that the policies, procedures of the district would come after the formation of the district, as with every other regional utility district that has been formed in the state and in the Midwest. The intent is, again, this is the beginning of the process. This then allows for any questions, concerns to be identified and considered prior to the petition being submitted. And then, that would be by the Commissioners. And then, once the, the time clock starts, then IDEM has a public hearing, and they will receive feedback. So, there's ample opportunity to share concerns on specific things.
In what ways have you collaborated with the Monroe Township trustee on this project?
We have not at this time.
Why?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
He was very happy to hear from me today when I reached out to ask his opinion on the project. The only thing he knew about it was a paragraph that was in the Herald Bulletin last month. And he expressed, I don't want to speak for him, but he expressed concern, because he has questions and some frustration, that he is one of the government entities that we get to appoint someone to the board, and he has not been involved in any meetings or in the process.
And again, this is very early in the stages. We are just beginning this process, and we will be certainly meeting with him and reaching out, engaging him as soon as possible. So, thank you for talking to him, though.
Is there a way that we could get a list of the households affected, so that we could call our constituents and find out if they would be in favor of us supporting this?
I'm sure that once the list is compiled and the letters are mailed, that that would be publicly available, if it is so requested.
But not before we express our support?
This is your choice as to whether or not you would like to support this. I'm just simply providing the information and asking for your consideration.
Do you have a 10-year projection of the sewer rates for these households that are going to be on sewer?
We do not. This is part of the process that would happen, typically it would happen after the formation of the district. In this case, we're doing, going to do it parallel because of the agreed order, but that is several steps further than where we are at this point in time.
Are you going to match their current rate?
You can't match a current rate when you don't have a rate.
Exactly. So, we're going to be adding on a monthly utility fee to a already low come area, for not knowing how much that's going to cost the homeowners?
I think it's important to understand that this is not something that we have the ability to say yes or no to in general. The district formation, sure, but the overall project, this is under an agreed order from IDEM. This is something that the state has come in and said the county has to address. Forming a regional utility district allows the county to do that in a way that could then become a sustainable, independent entity, rather than a one-time cost to the county, in a way that would then ensure that, as these occur in the future, which it is very likely that this will occur in the future, that that can be addressed, again, in a sustainable and positive way. The other thing to keep in mind is that forming a regional utility district allows this entity to pursue funding through the Indiana Finance Authority, State Revolving Loan Fund. Typically, the counties themselves cannot do that unless there is an intent for a district, just because of who is an eligible entity, and counties are not generally eligible entities under this program. That program is a subsidized loan and bond program that allows water, drinking water, wastewater, and some stormwater projects to be installed in cost-effective manners. The areas that we are looking at for this project, again, because IDEM has told us this is where they need us to do. These areas are, as you stated, the lower-income areas, which makes them eligible for the better financing packages through the Indiana State Revolving Loan Fund, which then allows the project to be done in ways that minimize the cost. Yes, there's going to be a cost. There will be a cost. And unfortunately, that is the nature of having to address environmental concerns that are caused by failing septic systems that these homes have. The cost to replace these septic systems, in many cases, is higher than the actual assessed values of these homes. And so, the option is then, if nothing is done, IDEM would either come in and take over and tell the county, we are doing this, and you are paying for it without any say in it, or IDEM would come in and condemn the homes. And that is not a situation that anyone would like to see. This is a problem that has, again, it's not unique to Madison County. It's very, it's actually, I can't even say it's the rural, just rural communities. When I worked for Citizens Energy Group in Indianapolis, we had a very large number of septic systems in the city of Indianapolis, much larger than you would expect. And it's, it's a problem that many communities are facing. And so, unfortunately, it's not something that we can continue to allow, simply because it has been put off for so long. These have been discussed for probably, I mean, the Clean Water Act, since the Clean Water Act has been in play, so, in the 70s.
So, not every septic system in these neighborhoods is going to currently be leaking. There would be some, some that are, that they're just not up to code. And so, if you force a low-income family onto sewer, even though their current old septic is not actually causing an environmental issue yet, and they can't pay that bill, how would that be handled? Because I know that when I used to work in utility assistance in another county, the way that that city would shut off sewer, when people didn't pay the bills, they would shut off the water. And I know city water is not part of this project. So, would that be like, I don't know, like a lien on their home?
You are getting into policy, which is not something that would have been discussed yet. But one thing that I do want to address that you stated, that I want to make sure we clarify, is that the septic systems that are not up to current code, it's not that they're working as, it's not that they aren't, how do I say this? The reason code changed is because the old code did not prevent environmental contamination. So, to say that they're, they're not problematic, to say that they're not contributing to situations is, is an assumption that is not likely to be true when, if true, if a detailed investigation is done. So, that, I want to make sure we're careful about that, because when we say septic systems from older homes, it's nothing like what we think of as a septic system today, with the finger systems, with the tanks, with the checks and balances in place. It is very different. Just to think about the size of those lots, and I think it's pretty obvious that you can't get, septic systems are great when they're in places where you have enough space for the ground to naturally do the filtering. And I don't want to go off on that tangent, because I'm a bit of a wastewater nerd, and I'm sure you don't need to hear that tonight. But that is, the, the problem is that that simply cannot happen when you have a quarter-acre lot, or even a half-acre lot. And so, they're not functioning in a way that is needed for these communities. And it causes health issues. It causes concerns. It's something that needs to be addressed.
What is the justification for making the district the entire unincorporated area of Monroe Township, versus drawing the district around the Scotts and Phillips divisions?
It's to allow flexibility. In working with the city, and in with, in initial conversations with IDEM, and with the State Revolving Loan Fund, they have some ideas. You have a confluence of five to six different objectives, from the state, from the finance authority, from the city, from the county, from the Health Department, and so forth. And when you look at those, part of the overreaching discussion is, what financial package can be pulled together in a way that would be cost-effective for the residents and for the communities? For example, if you have to, if the end project involves, let me say that differently, there's economies of scale, depending on what the project ends up being. And the neighborhoods, IDEM has certain community, certain parts of the communities on their radar, and that can be used, so the discussions could be, if you include this neighborhood, we can improve the overall rating within the financing package to this scenario, as opposed to this scenario. So, it was to give flexibility to meet both the objectives of the city, the county, and the regulators.
When I spoke with the Health Department, I asked the same question, or I asked it very similarly. And Stephanie Melinger said that the long-term goal would be to run sewer to every home in Monroe Township that has a septic system that, or tank, however you want to call it, that was built before we had our current codes.
And I can't speak to anything that Stephanie said, but I can say, or what she said to you, but I can't see the discussions that I have had with Stephanie, with her team. The homes that are not on the small lots are not, I mean, it wouldn't be cost-effective to run sewer to them. It's just not a practical situation. This is focusing on the communities and the areas of our community that simply cannot support onsite disposal systems in a way that is environmentally conscientious.
But we are giving the regional utility district that power to do so in the future, by drawing the boundary as the entire township?
I mean, I can't speak to that. I think that's a mischaracterization of a utility. Because, to be fair, that's, again, policy, and that's not, that's not like the purpose of the petition or anything that we're talking about at this stage, would be.
Could the utility district only be for sewer, or could other utilities be implemented in the future under the same regional utility?
Utility districts can be for sewer and water.
I have a question.
Sure.
I know that ARPA has funds for the communities out there. Now, irregardless of what happens tonight with the resolution, that is something that the county has already involved with the, you know, like, there is.
Correct. And I say that cautiously, Jody, because the county can't be a utility. Okay? So, somehow, some utility has to take ownership of this infrastructure, once it's in place. This allows the county's investment of the ARPA funds to be done in a way that would establish this structure, this managerial structure, in a sustainable manner. So, this, the utility becomes a self-sustaining entity. Otherwise, the county is paying, is writing a check to someone else to take care of this situation, to address the situation, but not being able to have that managerial structure in place, or that investment in place, to be able to respond for future situations. Also, by having this utility district, it positions the collective project to be better positioned for the more desirable financial packages available from the Indiana Finance Authority.
My second thing is, is in the, oh, sorry. My second thing is, in the, can you hear me now?
That's my phone.
Sorry.
I'll leave the phone.
The second thing is, in the resolution, it states, "The Council has reviewed the preliminary engineering report and petition process detailed by commonwealth engineers." I have not seen that.
And I, please don't take offense to this. Because you did not have Council available, we essentially took the Commissioners's resolution and just updated it for the Council. This can absolutely be edited tonight, if you have other parts you would like to strike from this. That's not a problem at all. I also can provide those documents as we move forward to, towards the process of moving forward with the actual submission of the petition.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we table this resolution until the next meeting, because it would be irresponsible of us, irresponsible of us to pass it, whereas it does state that the Council has reviewed the preliminary engineering report and petition process detailed by commonwealth engineers.
Pastor Keller's made a motion, is there a second?
No, I think not.
Pastor Varowski, is there a discussion about tabling the resolution?
I have a question for Jessica. Does that delaying a month cause any issue?
The longer we delay, the longer until the formation of the district, which then puts in, we could put into question the, the funding packages that are available to us at the given time. But again, as I said, if you have edits to the text of this, that is 100% doable. We can easily modify the text.
Four weeks, cause an issue?
It could. It could. I can't say for sure, but it could.
It also could not, right? But it might be.
Yes, but at the same time, the way that the funding works in the state is, there's certain deadlines for when you have to have your information submitted. And if you don't get it submitted by those deadlines, you then give up to the next year's funding. So, what could happen is that the, if the district does not, if the district petition doesn't get started, again, this petition is the very first step. This is just saying, we recognize there's a problem. We recognize that we need to make adjustments to this. As the petition goes through the nine, 10, 11 months of public comment and review, it will be modified. It will be edited. It will be updated through the process, based on the feedback that is received. So, delaying could very well push it out of the funding cycle that we are aggressively trying to get into. It also could, we also don't know what's going to happen at the federal level. This is, these are federal funds that come into the state that would, that are used for these types of projects. The uncertainty that we all know and we are well aware of that is happening right now could make it so that we would miss out on the opportunity to take advantage of the funding that is out there right now, particularly for low-income communities. That being said, the project would still have to happen, but what it means is, we would have to have a different venue for funding it, which is probably more along the lines of... which is probably more along the lines of bonds on the open market, which is, you know, instead of a 2% interest rate, we're looking at double that, triple that. So.
One thing I'd like to point out is that the council didn't receive this resolution until halfway through the day on Friday. And that's not meant to criticize, but just to point out that we had two and a half business days to gather as much information as we could. I've been on the phone all day today and half the day yesterday trying to learn as much as I could and trying to talk to constituents, but I didn't get to talk to as many people as I'd like. I had to leave a message with the mayor and Alexandria and I'm not able to talk to his office. So I just really would like some more time to investigate. I know you keep saying this is just the beginning of the process, that this is the only vote the council gets in the matter.
It's actually not.
Until we get to appoint a board member once it's already created.
And it's actually not. Just to clarify, I want to make sure, because I did find out more information since you and I talked about that. First of all, you've already voted twice to support this effort through the funding of the two ARPA initiatives that you have already granted money for. Secondly, this, so there's, this vote is next and then there would be a nomination to the, to the district, which would come near the end. But then any financial decisions that are made as far as moving forward on the actual project itself with the bonding and so forth would also come back to the council.
Right. That is what we discussed earlier. But what we voted on before was to, to fund like the study, for instance. But now it's whether or not we're going to support this new government entity that's going to have their own political, independent political entity that's going to have their own powers, that are people who are appointed, not elected. And you start talking about eminent domain and abilities to force rural homes onto a utility that they may or may not want. And I want to hear how my constituents feel about this before I say whether I'm going to support it or not. Obviously, the county needs to address a couple neighborhoods that IDEM is aware of where there's an obvious issue. And from a health standpoint, I, I agree with that. That needs to be done, but I want to make sure we're doing it in a way that is also protecting property rights.
And did you mention that those constituents would have 180 days and things would not fly along the way?
It's even more than 180 days because it would, that's what I'm saying. It comes out to closer to nine months.
And the five members that are initially on this, then it is turned over to the district itself, correct? So those members will not still be.
That's the first board.
That's the first board. And then, but you did.
But that also would happen at the end. So that would happen a year from now.
So then at the end, then they would have representatives?
Correct.
Not the five people making up the political board?
Well, the board, it's not, it's the utility board. And this is how Fall Creek Regional is structured as well. The utility board is, the utility is managed by the board and the board is appointed by elected officials. And I also want to just, and I, I know I've already stated this, but I want to make sure that it's understood that this is what gives the county the ability to still maintain control of this. If the county does not form a utility, the county will not be able to manage the infrastructure project that is mandated to be done. And so that's where it's, it's a fine line. I, I very much understand the concerns and then please don't take this as me not understanding them. But I want to make sure that, that this is, that you understand that this is, the utility board is the way that the county can maintain the control over forming the, you know, how the funds are invested, how the projects are implemented, how the utility rates are and the policies of who's required to connect and who's not. Otherwise, the county will be forced to pay for work and not have the same level of control with respect to the actual implementation because it will either, it will be, it will be done at IDEM's terms. And that's, that's the unfortunate situation because this has been delayed for 20, 30 years. This has been in the back, it's been one of those things that's just always been pushed out. We are at the situation now where if the county doesn't form a utility board, the county will not have control or even, will have very limited involvement on how that moves forward.
And the people are number seven, I get. And similar to the jail. I know on a grand scale, but basically, you know, for years now, we were supposed to build a jail, couldn't do it. Federal regulations state we have to build it. Hey, if you don't build it, Madison County, we're going to do it. And guess what? We price the price tag, not you. You don't have control.
Similar?
In, in some ways, yes.
But on the other hand, they, the health department, Jeff Graham, the commissioners, the auditor, the engineer, IDEM, the engineering consultation firms have all been meeting for months over this and they've not involved us with the Monroe Township's R C. And you've given us two and a half business days to make a decision if we support it or not. So to be fair, I would like another month.
And to be fair, this is not the first time I've talked to you about this. I know this is for our new members, which is why I give so much background information. But I've, I've updated this group on the studies and the work that we've been doing numerous times since we've been involved in this. So.
I do think it is concerning. We have obviously a lot of questions. Got it?
We can't hear you.
Is this better?
Nope.
I don't think it works.
It doesn't work. Use Rob's.
I, I was just saying, I do think it's concerning how many questions we do have. I do understand that there's a time constraint on it. We don't want to lose the funding. So I think really today, it's just a choice whether we wait, obviously, or not. I mean.
And many of the questions are not going to be answered at this time because this is so early in the process. This is initiating the process. And again, the, the language in the resolution can be tailored to your comfort level, but the question is, do you support the concept of forming a regional utility district?
I do think most importantly, we don't lose power of the situation. I think that's important.
We don't control it or don't form this utility, we both have to say so.
But what about, but what about the owners?
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Well, I just had a question. I'm sorry.
Your motion is to table this consideration of this resolution for one month, until next month's meeting. Yeah. Thanks for clarifying.
The question about the public being able to give their input, that's after the board is established, correct?
No, not at all. No, I'm sorry if that was, if that was the, if that was what was heard, not at all. Once the, so, once we have the support from the council and from the commissioners, then the commissioners are able to start the process of the public meeting and then the filing of the petition, the receiving public feedback. We can, we've been receiving public feedback for three years on this. It hasn't had the prominence because we are really now starting to get to where this actually has to go as opposed to just a broad look at the county. Public feedback can be sent at any time, but there will be a public hearing before this is even submitted to, to IDEM officially. That's part of the process. And then that 180 days starts once IDEM moves the board on their side of it. So public input is held, is heard and received long before we hear, before we have members of a board appointed.
But I mean, we're establishing the board tonight.
No, no, no. No, the resolution is just saying you support the concept of pursuing this utility district, forming this utility district. The, the board would not be appointed until IDEM comes back and says the county has met all of the requirements in IC 16, or 1326 for the formation of the regional utility district and address the comments that were received, the feedback that was received to their level of satisfaction. And that forms the district. And then we would be looking at who the appointees would be. So we're a year, over a year probably from having appointees for that.
And you said there were different options that you could have used to achieve this outcome. My only concern is, I want to just echo what Bethany said, just the idea of appointed boards and the eminent domain aspect of it. That's.
Sure. And just to be clear, the other options would be a municipal utility partnering with them, which is still, they would have to agree to essentially bring them into the service area. And that has not been, that hasn't happened. The second option would be to work with a private utility, which would completely take any control from the public officials away. And then the third option is a conservancy district, which is not really an option in this case because of the continuous requirements. But they are similarly structured to a regional utility district. So the regional utility district is what, this is what they were formed for. I certainly understand that. And I, and Councilwoman Keller and I had discussions about eminent domain. I'm not a fan of eminent domain, not at all. There's certain situations where it may be necessary, but in my 25 years of doing this, I've not had to pursue eminent domain on projects. And I, I really don't intend to start at this time. That is one power that a utility has and not, that's one of 100 powers that any utility would have. So.
Any other questions or discussion?
The motion is to table.
Motion is to table the, the decision on this resolution until next month's meeting. Clear?
Roll call too?
Roll call. Okay?
Counselor Sue?
No.
Counselor Cobb?
Yes.
Counselor Lichen?
No.
Counselor Varowski?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
Vice President Moore?
Yes.
No. Resolution passes?
No.
No.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize. Motion passes. That was my, thank you.
So then, to clarify, can, can we have a resolution drafted by, how, how do you want to move forward? Because I need to have a resolution, I need to have input on what the resolution says. And I don't have the legal counsel to work directly with yet. So how, can you give me some guidance on how to meet the concerns that we have? Understanding that many of the concerns that were expressed are not things that we would have at this point in the project. So.
I would like to see a copy of Indiana Code 1326 because I tried to find that and it doesn't look like it's a proper citation. I'd also like a copy of the preliminary engineering report and the petition process detailed by Commonwealth engineers.
That's Indiana Code 1326 copied off of, copied and pasted into a Word document. They did that earlier today. And as far as drafting the resolution? Yeah, all Indiana codes have that.
That's why I'm going to find it. So I would ask, I would just agree that I'd like to see a copy of the preliminary engineering report as well as the petition from the Commonwealth, email to us. So that we can address that right away. And then, and I, I would say that I would be willing to review that within the next couple of days. And then to look through the resolution to see what changes.
I did the text for us. Okay. Wonderful.
I would like to have a discussion on the statement, whereas the formation of the Madison County Red will promote economic development and residential growth. Because that's not something that we've discussed. It so far it's been to just address environmental issues. So in what ways this would affect economic development, residential growth within the county, or within, sorry, within the unincorporated areas of Monroe Township.
And that's standard language in these type of resolutions, but it certainly can be modified if that is your preference.
We've seen that as.
Yeah.
Physical location of Southern Madison County, but the regional waste district, which we were on, very moving. Very beneficial and great for that area.
Yeah.
For growth and contribute to the growth and popularity of that particular area.
Stated purposes of utility districts, that's one of the stated purposes of utilities and utility districts because infrastructure is so tied towards economic development. That's not meant to be specific to Monroe County. That's just the nature of a utility district and one of the stated objectives of them. Anything else? All right.
President Green, can you notify the firmly hired to get?
Yes.
Pass that information on.
For those who have questions, if you can make sure, if you're not clear what those are, to email her to articulate them would be helpful. I will communicate with her relative to issues related to the resolution.
Great.
Get that squared away and address next month.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I really, I appreciate the thoughtful consideration for both the questions and the answers. It's difficult. The tension that, that exists that we feel between the individual autonomy of a citizen and yet the responsibility of the state to provide for issues related to public health. That tension isn't going to go away and every once in a while it, it abuts and we feel it tonight and I just appreciate the thoughtful consideration.